Good evening.
Good.
I would like to call the Monday, June 12th, School Board Meeting to Order. Lisa, can you please call the roll?
Director Lala Burdi.
Here.
T Felton.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
W Felton.
Here.
Claflin.
Here.
Chair Raj.
Here.
That's six present.
And if we could rise for Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we've got all kinds of friends in the audience today. Couple pieces of business we need to do first. I will ask for a motion to approve the meeting agenda for this evening as well as the Committee of the Whole regular meeting for May 22nd, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 And motion carries. And up first, we've got Brady Krueger, our Activities Director for our Quality and Action Report to highlight spring athletic season.
All right, well, thanks again for having us back to talk about our spring season. Again, I want to do a special thank you to again Dr. Zambrino, the School Board, as well as the high school and middle school administrators for their continued support of athletics and activities at South St. Paul, especially during the spring as it gets a little hectic with events going on throughout the day. So we need a lot of support from our school administrators, making sure that we're doing everything that we can to get our kids educated, as well as give our kids opportunities to compete. So we will start right away here. We're a little thin tonight. We have some other people that have some life events going on and could not make it tonight, but I'm going to call up track and field, our two head coaches Manuel Sprigle and Tom Hart, to talk about track and field season.
Hi, everyone. It's great to be here. There's a lot of really great things happening with, with track and field, and we're really glad to have this opportunity to kind of share a couple of the, the pieces with us. First off, for our track and field program, it's, it's pretty joint. We share coaches and we kind of coach all the, both, both sides of both the girls and the boys. Tonight, I have brought with our youth contingent, let's make a little more space for Grayson. But, but with us, you know, there's a kind of two sides of what we're, what we're celebrating right now. I would have brought some older guys, but one of them is, you know, Anthony Samuel. He's a graduate, is a recipient of a, of a great scholarship from the foundation. And right now, he, just like every other time when I ask him to come to something, he says he has to work, so he's working right now, but he was really jazzed about getting that $10,000 scholarship he got, and he has a graduate with 3.81, is, is moving on to bigger and better things. Another track kid I was inviting was Isaac Burke. He right now is at a Naval Academy week-long seminar, so he couldn't be here either. So I brought along part of our, our core, what has really made our, our track team great this year. These guys and, and girls spent a lot of time doing some really great things for our community. Thing number one, we had six different youth track camp sessions where these guys all run different stations and work with all the elementary kids, and that's an opportunity for these guys to lead and kind of run stuff and problem solve and figure out how to, how do you interact with, with kids and get people to do things that maybe they don't know they want to do. So that's really fun and awesome, and it's a chance for them to kind of maybe, you know, take a leadership role and step away and maybe have a little bit more appreciation for their teachers and other adults who are trying to do the same thing with them each and every single day. Also, all of our, our both, boys and girls team went to Feed My Starving Children, and we were able to bag up 31,752 meals when we were there. That was also a really cool thing for the guys to work, and both girls and boys to work with together. Something that was cool about that is the feedback we got was we needed to slow down. The kids were moving around too rapidly, trying to fill up stuff, and they said that they were anxious we were going to drop some of the stuff. And they said, we need, you guys need to be a little bit slower when you're working. You're great hustle. So that was really fun and positive. Also, on top of that, these guys competed at our, our section and conference meet for, on the boys' side, and that's cool because they're all on the cusp of, if you put them together, almost being ready to, to shave their faces. They compensate by, by all growing their hair out. But anyway, we have a lot of really young guys on our team, and that's awesome because these guys helped contribute to, um, the boys' side, being Academic All-State for having a, a section GPA of, of the gold honor roll of above 3.95. So that's also something really cool that I'm really proud of for these guys.
I should correct you.
Please do.
They were 3.96. The girls were 3.95, so the boys slightly edged out the girls in the Academic All-State, but we both got academic gold for our team.
Yes, should write that on a calendar. Probably won't beat these girls in anything. So that's kind of it, my take, what I, I wanted to present, so.
On the girls' side, I just want to commend, we had a lot of great team performances this year, too, with the academic team. We also had four individuals get Academic All-State individually. Megan Miller in discus, Glory Johansson and Scarlett Johansson in the four-by-two, and also our Athena Award winner Sarah Winstonson in the eight, four-by-eight. Girls at our conference meet, we had three girls, actually three events that play, earned all-conference honorable mention. Sarah Winstonson in the 800 meters, Izzy Williams in the 100, and our four-by-four relay of Annie and Grace, no, Annie Sprigle, Izzy Williams, Glory Johansson and Scarlett Johansson. We also had eight girls earn all-conference, which is taking first or second place at conference. Our four-by-two relay, Annie Sprigle, Glory Johansson, Grace Sprigle and Scarlett Johansson. And then our four-by-eights, Sarah Winstonson, Katie Bakken, Abby Nunes and Ella Waska. So on top of that, at sections, we had some really great team performances. Our four-by-two was the one lone entry that made it to state. They qualified and they ran last Friday, and they ran a 148-41 at the state high school meet. So it was a good year for the girls and the boys, and it was a lot of fun seeing all the development over the course of the season.
It's, it's powerful to watch.
Very cool. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you been here for our fall or our?
My year.
Chris probably got a collection of those going at home, but congratulations.
Just throw them out here, like a discus.
Nice job, especially on the grades. Way to go.
All right, next up, we'll bring up our tennis, our boys' tennis program with one of our co-head coaches, Jesse Rock.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jesse Rock, and I am a co-head coach for the Boys' Varsity Tennis Team. I co-head coached with Nina, Nina Rieselman. And just to give you some background and context for our role in coaching this year, I've coached middle school, boys and girls tennis for about three or four years, and that was a couple of years ago. And then Nina was doing, does middle school girls tennis, and then JV for the boys the last couple of years. But this year, we co-head coached boys tennis together, and we thought it went really well. So a couple really good things that we're proud of and happy with is, number one, just activity and engagement with the sport. For a little bit, the numbers were dwindling, but we really try to make an active effort in the school to get engagement with the sport up. So we were able to have a varsity, JV and middle school team this year, which was a really awesome thing. So 10 players on each team. And then we had Tammy LaNars as our middle school coach. Another thing that we really wanted to focus on was establishing a booster club and just having a chance to actually set up a program for success in the long term, and we were able to do that with a couple successful fundraisers, Taco Feed at the Crow, and also B-52s, and I think we did one, we did one other thing? Maybe? No? Okay, just those two things, but they were really good. So that was awesome. And then, most importantly, obviously, for the players, number one, for the players that were coming out, we had about eight new players this season. And just one, making sure that when we're out on the courts, we're having a good time. Practice is something that's fun and it's something that people are looking forward to, because, I mean, if tennis is not the best part of your day, like, we're doing it wrong, you know? So we really focused on just trying to create fun and engagement and practice, and then also in that process, developing as players. We ended up, eight and five was our record, and that's between conference and sections, just matches in between, and some other teams that we play. And then we went to sections, and our two gentlemen here, and I'll let them maybe introduce themselves here in a second, went on to the second round of sections for the first time in a long time that we've done that as a school. So that's really cool. And I'm actually not going to let them introduce themselves because I'm going to brag about them a little bit. To my right here, I have Daniel Eversen, and he is a senior. He was a captain this year for us. He won all-conference. And then to my left, we have a rising star in the tennis community, Cooper Meyer, and he also won all-conference. He played one singles for us this year, and Daniel played three singles, and together they did doubles for our sections, which was really good. And Daniel, if you want to say something, or just highlights of the season?
This season was really great. Like Coach Rock mentioned, our numbers, numbers were dwindling for the past couple of years, but the season was a lot of fun. We got to bring a lot of new people into tennis and have a middle school program again, which was really great. The team bonded together really well. It was lots of fun to be playing music during practice and for us to all kind of have some fun with that. We got together after the season to just play some games and hit a round together, and that's something that I think has really been fun for all of, all of us who were on the team, and I'm looking forward to seeing how the team continues to grow in these next few years, hopefully.
Like Mr. Rock said, I'm Cooper Meyer. Not quite as well spoken as Daniel, but I'll try my best. We had a, had a great season this year, first, first winning record in quite a while. That was super exciting for me and everyone else, and we all got to know each other really well, really, really well. We even had a foreign exchange June, join our bunch, and he was a rising star. He won Rookie of the Year award, which was pretty exciting. Yeah, I think my favorite part was going out after every practice, or not every practice. Usually went to Taco Bell or something like that. Had to get a job to pay, pay for all that food, but it was a pretty exciting year and looking forward to next year.
Last but not least, sorry, we did also receive academic all, gold honors as well for tennis, which we're very proud of our guys for putting academics first, so.
Way to go.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Great, thank you.
Daniel, you also did a great job speaking graduation.
Yeah, amazing job.
Really good job. Good to see you.
All right, next up, we brought some of our affinity groups here to speak with what they have been kind of doing all year. We'll bring up Daisy Quenka with our CDLU group. They have done absolutely fantastic job, and I think Daisy has a presentation that'll be played so that you guys can kind of see and walk through all the different things that this group has done for our school.
Wonderful. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Buenas noches. Like Mr. Krueger said, my name is Daisy. This is my first year with the affinity group of Comunidad de Latinos Unidos, and we did a lot. We went to Feed My Starving Children, we did a soccer tournament, we also went to the theater of the U M North Rope, and we also participated in the Apex Fund Run at Capoche Education Center. And this group of kids, they're very great. They worked their organizational skills, their planning skills, and their teamwork to organize the Cinco de Mayo presentation that we had this past Cinco de Mayo. And I think it was a great success. We were not expecting all that people that showed up, but a lot less. And Emily is here to tell us about her experience.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Emily. I was a member of CDLU, and it was a, it was a really fun experience, I would say. A lot of learning opportunities, especially since I was a senior, working with younger kids was a lot of fun and a good experience for me. I think the planning really was hard, but it, like I've said a lot, it really helped us with knowing how to plan and do, become leaders. You can go ahead.
Yeah, we look forward for another successful year for next year. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If you didn't get a chance to go to the Cinco de Mayo event that this group put on, it was absolutely incredible. It was phenomenal. I was talking with Mr. Ochoaki while we were there, because they pitched this idea to us earlier in the year about what they were going to do. And what they started with to what it ended as was absolutely incredible, and to know that all of these, these students in this group did all this work, getting all these vendors and these dancers and all the organization that went into it. Really well attended, everybody was really well behaved. It was just a really, really impressive event that this group of students put on, so. All right, next up, I'm going to bring up Amber with BPO, and she has a couple of students with her.
Welcome.
Hi. My name's Amber Gay. I'm the advisor for the Black Pride Organization at South St. Paul High School. This is my third year as their advisor, and we've had a huge year. So I came into this role during COVID, and doing distance learning with students in an affinity group was challenging. All of the participants were seniors, and they all graduated. So our biggest takeaway from this year, I think, is just how much participation we've seen from the student body, how responsive they've been to our requests for them to join us, tell us what they think, like, what does Black Pride mean to you? Yeah, increasing their visibility in leadership roles. Olivia Banks is one of our student leaders. The rest of them are either working, moving, or traveling abroad, so we're happy for them. And I'm happy that Olivia was able to join us. This year, we did a lot of things for the first time. We, I'm wearing one of our T-shirts. We did a fundraiser to buy these shirts, and they're a nod to the original BPO design that was put together in 2017, right? And we got to recreate some of the photos that they took with the original BPO group this year with like our expanded group. And I had a graduate who was extremely moved by the pictures that we posted, like, to see how far the group has come in the last few years. We did I Love to Read Month, which was also Black History Month, so student leaders going to the elementary schools in the district, along with CDLU and some of the other sports organizations in the district to read to students. And the response from students at Lincoln, which is where I was at the beginning of the year, was tremendous. They were so excited to see, of course, the older kids coming in and taking time out of their schedules to come and read to them. Did you, you're there for that, right? Yeah. I'm not going to take up the mic. We did a lot of things this year. MLK Day, we did National African American Parent Involvement Day, which I'm excited to see expanding throughout the district. It's something that, like, neighboring big districts around us, that's just like a standard part of their calendar. So the years going forward, like, I'm excited to see that become more of a thing, like, really honoring the special relationship between Black families and the school district. Olivia can talk a little bit about her favorite parts of the year.
My favorite part, I think, would be just definitely getting new students in and hearing their voices, especially from kids you'd think wouldn't have that voice to talk about their opinion. It was nice to hear that. And then I think just also, like Amber said, visiting the, the elementary schools, it felt good to go and do that, because we also get to hear the younger kids' opinions and voices, too. So I'd say my favorite part was just being a leader of the group and being able to share knowledge and help younger kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome.
Future BPO members, right? And we ended the year by doing a field trip, which is something that we haven't gotten to do as a big group yet. There were 20 of us. We went to the Minneapolis Institute of Arts. We got to see some amazing things. It was interesting taking some students who have never been to a museum before. I'm honored that I got to have that experience. We got to learn some things together. And yeah, we had two seniors this year. We're super proud of them, America Fitch and Davon Simmons. They both, I think both of them got scholarships, yeah. And now all of our group leaders will be seniors this next year, so, yeah. It was a great year. Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can you give the other one to the Latino?
One of the special things about my job is seeing the adults that are working with these students back here, like Amber and Daisy, and the profound impact that they have on the kids that they're working with. Both of these groups will be represented, represented as part of the new, like, student representatives through the school board. And those students are doing those types of things because of individuals like Amber and Daisy, and the way that they're able to motivate and transform these kids' life. They absolutely do a fantastic job, come up with a lot of great ideas on how they can grow their programs and actually get down to the elementary levels and build those programs. So the next up, we have a little bit of information about boys' golf. Mr. Palmquist could not be here tonight. He is, I think there might be an addition to the Palmquist family, but that may be coming, but he shared this about his boys' golf team, that they had 22 boys out for the team this year, including 10 7th and 8th graders, which is awesome, and the future looks exciting. So the team had to be very patient with the long winter weather, but this spring, they adapted well to our situation. He wanted to thank his special assistant coach, Coach Barry Vaughan, for coming in and helping out this year's team. The varsity team was led by five juniors, Ray Rosales, Jake Maurer, Jack McClellan, Owen Medina and Caleb Erdman, as well as a freshman Cole Steever. Junior Ray Rosales earned Metro East All-Conference Honorable Mention as a team and was a captain, did a wonderful job. The section golf tournament was played at River Oaks. They had two players, Jack McClellan and Cole Steever, advanced to day two. On the second day, Cole Steever shot a season-best 77 and missed going to state by only four shots, so he was right there till the end. He would also like to recognize two seniors, Kate and Schendeldecker and Matthew Geldernick, who were wonderful examples to the younger players and did a great job on the golf course. They have 20 of 22 players coming back for next season, so they are super excited for the 24, 24 season. Mr. Dylan Olson, our baseball coach, could not be here. He had another commitment as well. The baseball team finished the season with a 6-17 record. They went 1-2 in the section playoffs. They had one all-conference selection, that was Landon Jasper, who's a sophomore. And then they had three all-conference honorable mentions, and that was Jacob Ban, Andrew Ritter and Wyatt Chaney. And they, too, are also looking forward to next year with eight returning starters coming back. Girls' golf, our girls' golf coach, Josh Palmquist, could not be here tonight. Special thank you to Josh, though. Josh was able to fill in, in a bind here, the spring season, as we were kind of looking for a coach, as our previous coach had to step away for family issues. But Josh did a great job leading our girls' golf program. We had two seniors, Kylie Evazich and Anna Jo Skora, that ended up making it to day two of sections, and just like on the boys' side, those two girls shot their season-bests on the last day, which is just a great way to finish the year. The girls' golf team would also earn academic honors as a team. It's a great group of seniors, and they finished off their season at Highland. Girls' softball, Coach Binder could not make it as well. And so we had one senior that, on that team, I'm sorry, we had two seniors. Delaney Norman earned all-conference honorable mention. The girls finished 8-13 and actually had a wonderful year. Lot of conference wins for the first time in a long time, so that was exciting, and they're only losing two seniors. So they actually have a lot of talent coming back that they are very excited for. And I think this will be the last time you hear from me until the summer, or end of the summer, but with the end of the season, it's been an absolutely wonderful, great first year here at South St. Paul. Some of the highlights that we had, obviously, of all the athletic accomplishments that we shared throughout the year, but some of the other big things that we talked about, I think the two kind of best days that we had was the days that we get into that elementary school and you watch these high school kids read and interact with those kids. Those are kind of those special moments that are really exciting to see. It was also incredible to see some of the, some of the individual growth that we had, not only within our athletic programs, but within our activities programs. We did have five seniors the other day sign and commit to playing at the next level, which is a big deal. Summer is, summer workouts are starting. We started those today, so it's been, even though we, we ended school on Thursday, had a day off Friday, kids are back in the building today already working, getting better for next year. Our theater program, Mr. Holson, will be recognized tomorrow as he earns the Spotlight Theater Educator of the Year. So just make sure to keep that as a special note. He does an absolutely fantastic job with our theater program. We're very proud to have him. But with all that, you guys have a wonderful night. Thank you for having me back. It's always exciting and a pleasure to be here.
Thank you so much. Wonderful first year with us, Brady.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. And next up, we had one public listening submission. We had one submitted through our website that wanted to discuss some things around some student discipline and to reflect their experiences in the schools over this last year, and we'll be following up with them. And I will turn it over to Vice Chair Monica Weber for our Committee of the Whole report.
So we had a very large agenda for our Committee of the Whole, which meets before our full committee meeting, where we do a lot of the, more the business of the board and dig deeper into some issues, which is also a public meeting that is held before. We talked about our renewal for the Minnesota State High School League. We talked about the continuance of some teacher contracts, which will be coming up later. And then we had a whole bucket of finance issues, mostly surrounding the 23-24 budget that we have to approve before the end of June per state statute. Talked about school age care and long-term facility management and the proposed budget and the additional resources we got from the state, along with some of the additional costs that we got from the state, and how that we balance those out in building a budget not only for next year, but for looking out the next five years as we go forward. We also talked about the interviews that'll be happening for our, we have three people who have expressed interest in being our interim school board members, due to the fact that we are, we have lost a member, and so that will be coming up. And then we also talked about the structure for our public listening sessions. And that's it.
Excellent. Thank you. Next, I will turn it over to Dr. Zambrino for a update around the district.
Great. Thank you, Chair Raj. Lots of exciting things as we wrapped up the year, so it was great to see our spring athletics and activities here. Lots of great opportunities for our kids to be engaged in many different ways and making a big difference, so appreciate that. And I will reiterate what you said about Brady Krueger doing a great job, I think, in his first year. That's quite a big job. I do want to make sure people are aware of a calendar change that came our way. So we knew that the governor was declaring Juneteenth a holiday, but we were told it would kind of, any impact of that would come in after August, which would mean this Juneteenth wasn't a challenge for us, but a recent legislative switch did act for us to move on that this year. So on June 19th, we will not be open, so that could impact any programs, Kids' Choice, ABE, Community Ed, Central Square, any of our programs. Really think of it as like July 4th, where we were shut and not having anything happen. With that comes a pivot for us around summer learning. So we were going to start on the 19th, on that Monday. We did push that out to June 20th. So the elementary summer learning, Packer Preview, early learning summer blast, that will push out till that Tuesday. Rest of summer learning will begin as scheduled. Have a link there on our website. If anyone has questions, you can certainly hop on and, and get a look. As we come into summer, we know sometimes our, our families, our students face food insecurity, so something we're proud to be able to do, and partnering with the Open Doors, offer free summer meals to any kids in the district 18 and under. And so those are served at designated locations. They do need to be eaten onsite, so if you're interested in finding out more about that program, hop onto our website and go to the newsroom slash headlines, you can find out more. I did hear from our affinity groups about their impact, so this is really neat. So last spring, I came in to meet with them, and just the ideas and insights those students had really pushed me and pushed us as a leadership team to, to make some changes, but bear. But very excited that in the spirit of elevating student voice, we are now welcoming new student board reps onto our school board. So Renata, who will be a senior next year, and Luis, a junior, they'll be on. They will not be voting members, but they're gonna, we talked a little bit at Cal about the need for some accountability and who better to be held accountable to than our own students? So I'm excited to have them join us in holding us accountable to delivering the experience they want. I mean, we'll do our best to think about what they need, but we know they'll have insights we just won't have. End of year, like wow, what an amazing year. Every email I send to our staff email, I always start with amazing SSPS staff because they really are amazing. So I just want to thank everybody for their great work this past school year. Commencement, what a perfect night we had for our high school graduation, for anyone who was there. The weather was great, the setting, our buildings and grounds team, just fantastic job getting that space ready. We heard, we saw one of our speakers, the student speakers, really on point. I am always in awe when I see kids do things that either I couldn't have done or wouldn't have done when I was their age, and I don't think I could have delivered a speech like they did. So well done on that. And then the faculty, Mr. Run did a great job as well. So that's a picture from our high school graduation. We also had the CLC graduation last week, and so want to commend them as well. There was a lot of excitement and a number of you were there, a lot of energy and excitement in that space as well, knowing both groups, whether it's our traditional high school or our CLC, to come out of that pandemic where they spent half of their time in high school in that space to get to where they have gotten to is just noteworthy and something that we'll all be proud of for years to come. Speaking of being proud of our students, we had a number of students who, we had six seniors who signed their letter of intent to play college athletics. We had a little event in the stock exchange and honored them. So that was fun to see their families there and watch them sign those letters, something I was never good enough to do, so kudos to them. Recently had our tri-district CAPS showcase, so that's an opportunity where we hear from our students about the projects that they did. We talked a little bit about that last time, but just want to make sure they were elevating that. This great partnership with the tri-district, which is Inver Grove Heights, West St. Paul, and ourselves, and getting our students real-life, real-world experience in business and entrepreneurship, computer science and information technology, healthcare, urban education, and then transportation and skilled trades. A number of our students shared projects they did, but also how sometimes it's neat because they'll do these programs and say, this is not for me, which is a very valuable experience. But a lot of them found things that they really love and are now continuing with, and that was really the theme that I heard in those presentations. And so I got to see their presentation. I heard students seeing, you know, colonoscopies and working on big rigs and all these great meaningful experiences. So appreciate we have that partnership, knowing with our smaller size, we wouldn't necessarily be able to offer that on our own. Other fun things that were happening at the end of the year, Lincoln had their fifth-grade 5K, so it's an annual tradition where the students run a 5K around the school, getting cheered on by classmates, other students, staff, and families, and always fun to see that. Love the smiles as they're running. I don't know if I could be smiling while I was running like that, but they must be in great shape. Capoja does their fifth-grade parade at the end of the year and got to ride around in Principal Bree Toy's Jeep, along with Assistant Principal Hanson with the Fire Department and Police Department and all the teachers and staff cheering on the students for their achievements. So fun to see that and excited to see them at middle school. As I was a middle school principal, always fun to see that new group coming in, so looking forward to seeing them over there. And then Capoja did a slide into first grade event with the kindergarten graduation, so all the kids slid down the slide as they had their name read by their teachers and then their career choice. So we had a lot. Chief Wiki can be happy. There were a lot of people interested in law enforcement with this group, so that was nice. Teachers were, was another theme, so we of course want that here in our district. So neat to see what they're aspiring to at that age. It'll be fun to watch them as they grow and see what they decide to do. As always, you can follow us on social media in whatever format you like best. And just a quick reminder on those important dates, again, June 19th, we are closed with the statewide holiday. Summer learning beginning on the 20th, as well as those free meals that I mentioned earlier. And of course, all of our meeting materials are available online to keep up to date or watch past videos if you weren't able to tune in live. So that's what I've got for today. Again, I just want to say, big thank you to our families, to our staff for making an amazing, just a wonderful school year.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have our consent agenda, which are typically financial claims, staffing and personnel in nature, and have been a part of the board packet and been reviewed by the board. Do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda for this evening?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. Next up, and I need to pause and just ask a clarifying question. Lisa, are we on second or third reading of our policy?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we have a wealth of policies under review that have come through our policy committee. The vast majority of these are updating language, and some of this is also updating to follow state and MSBA guidelines. Some of this has also been in response to some legal substance changes and making sure that we are prepared to handle that inside of the school. Those policies are available on our website for review, should you have any questions or concerns in relation to those. And that will move us on to business items. And I'm going to ask for a lot of patience. We've got a bunch of them tonight, and I'm going to try and get through these correctly tonight. First up, we have a motion for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the 23-24 Resolution for Membership in the Minnesota State High School League. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll just point out, this is an annual process where we just declare our interest or our partnership with the State High School League, and then of course, our willingness to follow their guidelines as we do.
Excellent. And Lisa, will you call the roll?
Director T. Felton?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
W. Felton?
Yes.
Claflin?
Yes.
Lala Bertie?
Yes.
Roche?
Yes.
Six yeas.
Motion carries. Okay, next up for business items, I'm looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the Education Identity Access Management Board Resolution that designates Dr. Brian Zambrino as identified as the official authority for educational identity access management for South St. Paul schools. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor, please say aye.
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 Chair Roche?
Yeah, oh, I missed discussion.
Resolution.
That one's, okay. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director Weber?
Yes.
W. Felton?
Yes.
Claflin?
Yes.
Lala Bertie?
Yes.
T. Felton?
Yes.
And Roche?
Yes.
Six yeas.
And motion carries. All right. Next up, I'm looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the Long-Term Facility Maintenance 10-Year Plan for South St. Paul Schools, Special School District Number Six. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I turn to Brady.
Good evening. So tonight, this recommendation is an annual recommendation that the school board approves in order to gain access to the long-term facility maintenance funding. So within the 10-year plan is a revenue projection as well as the expenditure plan itself. This does need to be submitted to MDE by the end of July, fully approved, in order to get access to it as a component that is levy-related as well as state aid-related. But this is a funding stream that helps us maintain our buildings and also some of the health and safety needs that we have as well. So this is an annual piece. We worked through it with the Finance Committee, as well as reviewed with the school board during the Committee of the Whole.
Excellent. Any questions? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Many business items tonight. Tonight I'm looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the Resolution Authorizing Intermediate School District 917's Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Program Budget and Authorizing the Inclusion of a Proportionate Share of These Projects in the District's Application for Long-Term Facility Maintenance Revenue. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And discussion, I return to Brady.
So similar to South St. Paul, our intermediate school district also has the ability to access the long-term facility maintenance funding. They do not, they cannot on their own turn around to levy taxpayers for these costs. So in order for them to gain access, we have to approve our proportionate share of that total. So their total that they're looking to levy for is $173,000. Our share would be $7,690.48. That would basically be levied on our taxpayers, and then that would flow through to allow them to do similar maintenance work and health and safety work to their buildings. So this is a standard piece that we work through every year with the school board, and it flows through our normal levy process.
Excellent. Any further questions? Basically, you call the roll.
Director Weber?
Yes.
W. Felton?
Yes.
Claflin?
Yes.
Lala Bertie?
Yes.
T. Felton?
Yes.
Roche?
Yes.
Six yeas.
Motion carries. Next up, I'm looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the 2023-2026 Alternative Teacher Professional Pay System, also known as ATPPS Plan. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And discussion, Dr. Zambrino?
Yeah, we had a presentation on this before from our lead teachers who run the ATPPS program, and this is a great opportunity for us to bring in revenue from the state that largely is directed at the professional development of our teachers. So work in professional learning communities or other professional development opportunities for them, as well as our peer review and peer coach process. So that gives them great feedback on their performance in the classroom from a peer. So it's nonevalutive, all about growth and becoming better professionals. So excited to see that our teachers approve that and look forward to our board approving that.
Any further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, I'm looking for approval of the South St. Paul School Board to approve the 2023-24 School Age Care and Preschool Fees. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Brady Hoffman?
Good evening. So tonight, we have a recommendation to approve an increase in our school age care, Kids' Choice Fees, as well as our community-based preschool. These are both fee-based programs. For our Kids' Choice programming, we did increase fees last year. We're looking for another increase as well this year to address inflation and operating costs. This just helps maintain our programming and the services we're providing at those current levels. For preschool, these fees have not increased since 2021, but the caveat with our preschool programming is we do receive voluntary pre-K funding from the state. We do have a set number of seats. So students that qualify for the VPK, that is paid by the state, and those families don't pay. For our preschool programming that doesn't qualify for VPK, we do have other scholarship opportunities that offset those costs, so that we can still provide preschool to those families as well through scholarships. So these fees are compared, we compare it to our neighboring districts, and we always strive to maintain a competitive, affordable fee for our families. So we worked through a process with that. Jean's under the community director and myself to go through this review, and so we are recommending these increases for approval for the 23-24 school year.
Excellent, thank you. Any further questions? All opposed? I mean, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next, I'm looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the continuance of teacher contracts. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And discussion, I return over to Joel Miltier.
Thank you and good evening. As part of the annual staffing process, administration has advised probationary teachers to retain and those who will be granted tenure in the upcoming school year. As a result, the attached document reflects probationary teachers who are recommended to be retained and probationary teachers who are granted tenure moving to continuing contract for the 2023-2024 school year.
Any additional questions? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And lastly, I am looking for approval of the South St. Paul School Board to approve scheduling a special meeting to conduct school board candidate interviews on Thursday, June 22nd, 2023, at 5:00 PM in the district office conference room. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And discussion, I'll turn over to Dr. Zambrino.
Yeah. So I think the community is aware of the passing of our director Bernie Beerman, and so we are still saddened for that loss and send our thoughts to his family. But we do need to move forward with a replacement, and so this gets us an interim replacement. So we had three candidates who applied, and you all will interview and select one of those candidates to stay in office. There's a 30-day wait after you all approve the candidate, then they can start sitting on on an interim basis until we hold an election in November. And then after that, that one's quicker than the normal January. Once that's certified, then we'll be able to put a permanent replacement in place. So that's why we need a special meeting on this one.
An unforeseen thing for us to take care of, but we want to make sure we have a full serving board for our community. Any further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. That was a lot of business items for the night. So next, I will turn to our board members. We had our Committee of the Whole meeting run a little bit long, so I ask that our board members give brief committee updates from how they have served in the last month, and then we will be moving into a closed session a little bit later. I will start with Ann Claflin.
Thank you. We did have a local issues meeting in May, speaking for us, I think it was on the Wednesday before Labor Day. Heard a lot of interesting information from our city government representatives, as well as County Commissioner Atkins. There's so much going on with the library construction, it's so visible right where we meet, and everyone's very excited to see that progress. He also shared a lot of information about the bison at Spring Lake Park. We didn't have much to share from the school, other than all the excitement at the end of the school year, and that was really wonderful to see, besides all of the seniors graduating, the things that they have achieved in their time here in South St. Paul, watching the younger students finish their years too and get to step up into being a fourth grader, a seventh grader. All of those steps are signifying the growth and accomplishments over the past year, and the kids were really proud to finish the year off.
Excellent. Thank you. Nikki Lala Bertie?
I have no updates at this time.
Okay. Monica Weber?
The end of session, Association of Metropolitan School Districts had a meeting. It was mostly talking about all the different variety of bills that passed during session, talking about all the things we know and all the things that have passed and we still don't know exactly how all the pieces are going to fit together. But overall, it was, you know, a very positive legislative session and happy that we're able to put some more resources into supporting our children. Also just wanted to say once again, congratulations to all the seniors. I love graduation. It's such a, you know, a unique moment in this community to see them all walk across the street and then down the hill, and then, and it's, one of the people I was sitting next to was like, are they really going to walk all that way? And I'm like, yep, they all walked out. And so it's just a really neat feature of our graduation ceremony. That's it.
Tim Felton?
The South St. Paul Open Board did meet. It's full steam ahead in the golf tournament. There were no additional requests, I don't think, for finances from the open, from the school. The main fundraiser is the golf tournament, so I encourage everybody to support that as much as they can and give to the open.
Excellent. Wendy Felton?
Yes, it has been a busy several weeks for us here on the Board of Education, and being the representative to intermediate school 917, it has been a really fun and exciting time. Last week alone, our Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing Program at 917 has a preschool classroom in South St. Paul up at Lincoln Center, and it was so nice. The instructors there instructed their students, and they did a play. They did a Pinocchio play. They did a great job. It was so interesting and wonderful to see, so we thanked those students immensely for that. And then they also carried a preschool graduation program. There were several students that would be heading off into kindergarten, even with their deaf and hard-of-hearing, things that they're dealing with, learning sign language, et cetera. So we thanked them. I also intended, attended the Concord Learning Center, which is out in Inver Grove Heights, which serves a lot of students handicapped, autistic, different types of things like that. They held their graduation ceremony there. That was excellent program. Many of those students, we learned, will be attending Dakota County Technical College in the TESA program, so we congratulated them out in Inver Grove. And also 917, their DCALES program and their DCALES-North program, which stands for Dakota County Alternative Learning Schools, held their graduation ceremony at Inver Hills Community College. So it was a great ceremony, nice big crowd. It was, it was a very, very good event for 917. Of course, also here in South St. Paul in our district, our CLC graduation, our high school graduation, and our employee recognition breakfast on Friday morning, I attended all three of these events. And the other thing that I thoroughly enjoyed, I also attended the tri-district CAPS program event that they held in West St. Paul, and I was so impressed talking with several of the young girls that were involved in the medical programs that were fortunate enough to be able to attend learning events and educational programming at Regions Hospital. One of the girls says it is her intent now to be a cardiologist doctor, and several of the other girls are definitely going into nursing school. So it was a true honor for that program. So it was something to be very, very excited about, and we thank Mr. Ben for his great job. And just as a reminder, next week, a week from this Wednesday, which is on the 23rd, it is the Capoja Days Parade, where our school board will be there in the parade. So we look forward to seeing everyone and looking forward to you waving at us as we go by, and as normal, we will be handing out some treats, so look forward to seeing you next Friday at the parade. Thank you.
Excellent. One of the other things that's going on is the Executive Committee is also doing a superintendent evaluation, as we are about mid-contract to kind of, as a check-in, and that's one of the other pieces that are moving on. Up next for our meeting tonight, we will be moving into closed session per open meeting law, Minnesota Statute 13D dot 03, for discussion in relation to teacher, principal, and paraprofessional contract negotiations. Do I need to do a motion? Excellent, thank you. I am looking for a motion for us to move into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We will be moving into closed session tonight at 6:56. Thank you.